Counselor Rash and Emily, we're making tonight's an upper court. So seven o'clock, I'd like to call the regular council meeting in number 28, order. For business, any calls for a community interest regarding the agenda. And if there's none, I'll proceed. Are there any additions or durations on the agenda? Just an addition, your worship on 13, we are going into camera tonight. Let's talk a little bit about it. Okay, so that's in the camera. Thank you.
And regarding the agenda, Deputy Mayor Solicitor Shelley, should it not be Corey on there?
It sure should be. Yes. Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda with those changes?
I can move that motion.
Sure. All in favor? Carry. Thank you. So previous minutes, the October 24th, the organized initial meeting minutes, also the regular meeting minutes, November 14th, the committee, the whole meeting minutes, and November the 18th, the special budget meeting. Are there any errors or omission to the minutes?
On 4.1 on the organization, I mean, John actually made that motion, I believe. I made some comments regarding it, but John did the motion just because it was relevant. So I didn't want to make a motion, but 4.1, I believe, was.
4.1?
Yeah.
Okay, Gilbert can approve it. Yeah. Very good point.
At least I shouldn't anyway. I actively didn't because it was, that's why it caught my attention.
Yeah. Yeah, I must admit. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other errors or omission of the minutes? Not, can I get a motion to accept the, not sure with that change?
I can move that, yeah.
Thanks, Corey, all in favor? That is carried. So going forward, the first item on here will be the seal delegation. Donna, if I could turn it over to you, please?
If, yes, thank you, your worship. If I may approach?
Yes.
Thank you. Just, we have our guest online. Yep. No, you're fine. I'm behind you. All right. So I have a story to tell tonight, your worship and counsel, and it's a, it's a pretty amazing story, and I want to tell it tonight to everyone. This gentleman, who twisted his education in Thorsby in 1938 before studying airframe mechanics at the provincial institute of technology in Calgary, Alberta. Fond of hockey, baseball, photography, and his youth. He was single and living in Thorsby where he worked on a family farm with his father before investing in Edmonton, Alberta, November 26, 1942. He served with the Royal Canadian Air Force for Argan Astra, attached number two bombing gunnery school as a leading aircraftman during the Second World War. Part of the British Commonwealth Air Training Plan and based at RCAF station Mossbank, Saskatchewan, the gunnery school provided training to new air bomber and gunnery recruits before being deployed for service overseas. On January 24, 1944, the leading aircraftman died after his Lyssender aircraft collided with a Bolingbrook aircraft during the routine gunnery exercise. Crashing near Johnson Lake, Saskatchewan, he is commemorated at the St. John's Ukrainian Greek Catholic Cemetery in Thorsby, Alberta. He's the son of Jacob and Annie, brother Kim, Sophie, Alex, and Victor, who died in 1925, Estella, Phyllis, Thomas, Francis, and Joseph. He was 21 years old. His citations to the war medal, Canadian Home Materials Medal. When you go home, tell them about it and say, for your tomorrow, we gave our two. The town of Thorsby has commissioned this with the fallen parents association in memoriam and honor and pride. Did it so?
Oh, thanks very much.
Would you like me to bring this back to you, Phyllis?
You know, I, I need to tell my brother that much, I want that information from fallen parents. I left, he left when I was nine years old. I didn't know very much about him, and I never did. Came back for Christmas with my sister, who was also in the airport, for just a while. Of course, I'm here at TIA, and so that information is just something that I just found out about on one table. So thank you very much. Back there.
This is all yours, Phyllis, and we have a member of the fallen parents on the screen here. And take it away, guest.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for inviting me here, and thank you, Phyllis, very much for the knowledge of your brother. I do have a little letter that I'd like to write from behalf of the foundation, and then I'd like to just express my gratitude, but we would like to thank Donna and the town councillors and the citizens of Thorsby for helping us honor Arthur, and I want to thank Phyllis and your family for the information. Our way of life is not without cost, and this memorial was commissioned to honor your brother and acknowledge your family's sacrifice. And I'm sorry I get tearful when I do this. We can never repay him or you for the years you could have spent with your older brother. It won't ease the pain your parents must have endured, but I hope in some small way it indicates how much his life mattered to all of us. Arthur's biography is also on our charity's website, where it will be preserved alongside his young comrades Carl Wickstrom, Hubert Johnson, and Neil Clark, who also called the community home and sacrificed their dreams and aspirations in the Second World War. And I do want to thank Donna and, and everyone, you know, for commissioning the memorial, the town of Thorsby. And I would just like to thank you guys very much for inviting me. I don't often speak, I'm in the background, I do a lot of research, et cetera, and I get to read the stories of all these kids, and I get to read a lot of letters that they wrote home to their mothers, and I do have additional information if Phyllis would like to have that. I can't fit it all on the memorial, but we do, from the bottom of our hearts, Phyllis and everyone, thank you all very much for the sacrifices that were made and for commissioning the memorial, Mr. Mattier. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Phyllis, about your brother's sacrifice, we aren't, we aren't sitting here today in peace. We aren't sitting here today being able to do this.
Another how that she talked about a super Johnson, came from, his brother came from Mayor Thor, and sister came from Gunn to Lady Reed's here. So they're quite close to Thorsby. I got to know them, and I do talk to them about this.
Nice.
Thank you very much for that. Yes, I certainly would like a little more information about my brother. It would be nice.
I'll, I'll download the files for Donna and send them to her, all the files we found. Unfortunately, can't fit it all on there, and I hope we can complete a memorial for everyone from Thorsby that gave their life for us. Thanks.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, would you like to give?
I sure would, and exactly what you're saying there, with the permission with the council and everything, we hope this to be an annual thing, and every year possibly to nominate somebody for one of these plaques. And I wish we would have had it in time, maybe for Remembrance Day, and maybe that, maybe next year we will, so we could add it to our program. So thank you very much. And Phyllis, I'll bring this over here. I'll put it back in here, and thank you very much.
Can I get a picture?
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, we'll go at the back there.
We would love a picture of Phyllis with that plaque if it's at all possible to put on our website under our news, and maybe the town people, like the town, everybody on council.
Right there, you're fine. You can hold it with her, and we'll take a picture.
Would counsel carry the, Sydney, can you take a second picture with counsel?
Yes. There, better? Smile. Smile. I'm not smiling. You don't want to smile. Oh, yes, there is. There we go.
And then we'll get the camera. Here. Squeeze out. Is there a spot here?
I'm not from any guy.
And thank you, and have my heart and pride for getting Phyllis here tonight.
You kept asking me questions. Why? Why? Like, you can't believe.
You get the middle of the bar.
It's a small town, it's hard to not say anything when you're.
And I did, I wanted to say something else, and then I'll leave, but we did try to get that memorial plaque there for Remembrance Day, and so one of the things I would suggest is if you would like to have it for Remembrance Day, sometimes it can take us up to two and a half months to find all of their information, and that's what ends up happening. Then it goes to a printer, and that can take, they fit us in, right? So when, so usually within a two-week period, they can print it, so we do need a little bit of time to make sure that we do a proper job. And thank you, everyone, again, for the invite, so I'll leave, and I can't wait to get some pictures, Donna.
You'll get them, and I can't wait to get your information. It's been a joy working with you, and I look forward to more interactions, our two teams working together.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I'll send a link to you, Donna, for the website, and maybe you can show Phyllis when we get all the pictures up on the news.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and councillor, and councillors, sorry. Thank you, Phyllis. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. So next on the IMR C P, quarterly report and induction, and I have Corporal Rob Gillies here to tell us what's going on.
Yes, well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Rob Gillies, I'm the active detachment center within Thorsby and Breton. As you know, Breton and Thorsby are kind of an amalgamated detachment. We run as one unit within two separate locations, so over our quarterly, our second quarterly report for the year, talk about that, and then answer any questions that anybody has, and you have to do that. So the first thing is just an update on our body worn camera project that was taking place for the past few months in various detachments around Alberta. Unfortunately, the vendor that we were using did not meet our criteria, so we kind of scrapped that vendor, and we moved on to our second one, which is kind of a big-name vendor. I imagine that it will probably meet the expectations, but the next few pages just have to do with meetings that we've held with town and council, some of the crime reduction meetings we've had around in various communities. If you need further information, it's all, it's all right there. I can tell you, in October, we held a crime prevention meeting in partnership with the Crime Watch at Strawberry Hall. There was only about four people that came out, which was kind of a project, but it's what it is, so we'll continue to get out there, that's getting, you know, kind of hearing from the community. They want us out there in the community doing these crime prevention seminars and trying to reduce crimes, so. Next, we'll talk about our community priorities. So these are, are part of our annual performance plan, is what we call them. Contrary to what you do here in the media, we do set these in consultation with town, council, the community, we send out surveys of what the community wants us to focus on, and then once we review that, then we set our community priorities. I can tell you, it's been very similar for probably the last five years. Kind of the big three that we hear is crime reduction, property crime. So obviously, the major concern that we hear in the community is theft, breaking enters, all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's up to us to kind of formulate a plan on what we do to combat that. So what we do is, we, we call them offender checks. So when we charge someone in their release back in the community, the court imposes conditions on them. One could be like a curfew, but it's up to the police to check on that person to make sure that they're home, that they're abiding by all their conditions, so we do that. We set a goal of 475 checks for the year. That's well more than one a day. Various things can impact this, such as if, if everybody's locked up in jail, it's pretty tough to check on people. We've only got about 175, 123 year to date, but I can tell you, there's, there's been a number of people that have been locked up, that have been put in jail, that we have a reason for that. We also have hotspot checks. A lot of the time with the police, it's not about working harder, it's kind of about working smarter. So we have various locations within the community, whether it's through crime mapping that are high property crime areas. Those are some of the areas that we focus on, we check, and we log when we check those areas. We set a goal of about 15,000 of those checks per year, so we're getting into those areas every single day. Year to date, we've done about 7,900. So we are getting in there every single day. As everyone knows, police work, you know, there's paperwork involved in that, so when members aren't doing that, they're out on the road doing these hotspot checks. Priority number two is to communicate effectively, to build and maintain positive relations. It's kind of like what we're doing here today, conducting those crime prevention seminars with the Crime Watch, trying to impose on people the values of crime prevention through environmental design, it's called, so we're doing, doing a lot of those as well. The priority number three is enhanced road safety. I think this is a big one for everybody. You know, we all want our families safe on the highways, or traveling to or from where they need to go. A lot of this is doing check stops, kind of hitting home with impaired drivers. It's also about doing traffic stops, where we're screening for mandatory alcohol on every single person that we pull over. During this quarter, there was, we did 32 check stops, various locations around the county. One of these are static check stops, we also, we call them roving check stops now, too, where we get two or three cars, and we say, okay, for the next hour, we're going to hit on Thorsby during the wee hours of the morning, and if you're driving around, you're probably going to get pulled over. During those times, we screen for mandatory alcohol on every person that we stop. Violator contacts, we've had 183 violator contacts within the last three months, so this quarter is July, September, and August. And so what I mean by violator contacts is traffic stops, so it could be for speeding or tinted windows, or any, any offense or violation that we see. Talk about, a little bit about, you can move on to the next slide, and I'm not going to bore you with a bunch of stats, but I will kind of just hit home some of the most obvious ones. Person crimes, this is like assaults, not necessarily robbery, as you can see from the stats, there assault is probably the big one for us, right now, anyway. And we've seen this is the highest number of assaults we've had in the last five years, so it's, it's up a little bit. I wish I was a mind reader, and I could tell you why. Unfortunately, I can't, but it's kind of a trend that we've seen, I think, throughout all of Alberta, within the last year, especially, you know, you look at some of the news in Edmonton, where assault and violent crime are up, and this, you know, could be due to, you know, social disorder type things, where addictions, homelessness, tell you we don't have as many of those problems being in a rural area, but, so those might be some of the causes for that, domestic violence, where now COVID is over, and people are struggling financially, or, you know, those are just some of my guesses, anyway. So they are up a little bit, so unfortunately, I wish we could prevent more of those. Unfortunately, assault is more of a reactionary, you know, where we're getting called to with domestic violence after the fact, or as it's created. Sound like a property crime, where we can try and, you know, prevent that by targeting our prolific offenders, but hopefully with some of the mental health resources that are, that are popping up now. Property crime, it's our lowest number that we've seen in, in five years, same as last year, so just the three months, we've had 88 files that had to do with property crime. Those other criminal code at the bottom, those are, those would be files where we breach someone on their release conditions. So these are just in relation to Thorsby. There is a Breton in there as well. I can tell you, Breton is substantially higher on the property crime. I think it just has to do with more rural area, there's more lease sites, lease site dust and copper wire dust are, are a big problem. On page six, if you just keep scrolling through, just talk about kind of our snapshot of resourcing within our detachment right now. So we have 14 established police officers. At the time writing this, there was 13 working with one on medical leave. I can tell you, right now, there's, you know, 14 out of 14 working, which is good. We have all our support staff working as well, so every single person we have is at work, which is excellent. Maybe an anomaly within the province and, you know, EPS and Calgary Police Service, there's quite a few vacancies, so I think we're fairly lucky to have a full working staff members. I can tell you as well, the province, they have approved one additional member for Breton detachment, so very soon we will have 15 positions within our detachment. The next slides just have to do with specifically the Breton crime stats. Someone just wants to scroll through those. I won't talk about those too much. They are there, if anyone wants to review them. Again, you can see kind of the trend of the total persons crime, those are, those are up, and the property crime within Breton area are up as well, so certainly some work to do there. There's never a dull moment. The last little bit there, the last two slides, they're just kind of files of significance, and I won't go over these in, in too much detail. There is a common theme of a police dog service being available and coming to our rescue in a number of these, whether it's tracking somebody through the woods or assisting us. I'll let people read, read through those or discuss them. A couple of the, the big ones are, some of the, we had a few arrests in relation to lease sites, where we've, we've caught people ripping out copper wire in these sites and arresting them, people in stolen vehicles, people doing breaking enters in progress. All of these people have been arrested and charged. Unfortunately, many are out on wards as we speak, but once they're put into the court system, fortunately, it's kind of out of our, out of our hands. So that's kind of my presentation. You know, any, any questions or concerns, anybody has, love to answer any questions, comments, concerns?
I just had a couple of new diagnosed, the over 5,000, under 5,000, there's quite a skew there, the ones minus 50%, I think it was, and then 700% increase, but is it just, are we talking just inflation, or like, why are, like, why are we looking at bigger numbers now?
Which one was up? Was it over 5,000?
Yeah, the over 5,000 was up like 700%. So I was thinking, are we just saying that we're finding more larger ticket items, or we just?
I think it has to do a lot to do with site deaths, when they're stealing over 5,000.
Yeah, so it is higher value.
And copper wire value.
Yeah, okay.
I can tell you, the lease sites are a huge problem, where they're going in there, literally cutting down power poles and going to lease sites, and then ripping the copper wire out and doing thousands and thousands dollars worth of damage, and then the lease sites are down for a week, and, you know, that's $100,000 in revenue, that's no longer there, so.
Cutting down the bulk, that's, that's, that seems great.
It's huge, so it's, it's a big problem. We do have some projects on, on the go with, you know, some of our prolific offenders. Unfortunately, it's only about 5% to 10% of the community that is involved in these types of crimes, so we work with our, our Central Alberta Crime Reduction Unit and target these people, and I can tell you, we do have a, a few projects under, underway, and hopefully for quarter three, they'll be one of those file highlights for you, so.
I just, my other question is just criminal harassment, and I think this was up quite a bit percent-wise, too. Is there anything we should, like, I don't know what that, is this coincidence, or is there anything we should be kind of paying attention to socially, or?
I think it, it falls in line a lot with the assaults being up as well, where criminal harassment, the uttering tricks, similar, where there might not be enough, you know, substantiating assault charge, but somebody being harassed on social media could be one. Social media is always increasing and increasing, so we see a lot more harassment that way, and within domestic violence. Not all domestic violence is assault, can be harassment as well.
Anybody else have any questions yet?
Yeah, how much tinting is permissible, like on vehicles?
Are you kidding? Good tickets?
Driver's windows, front windows.
Driver passenger windows, zero.
Zero.
And provincial, zero.
Zero.
So in Ontario, there's a small percent that's allowed, but within Alberta, it's zero, so.
See it quite a bit.
You do see it quite a bit, it's a pet peeve of many of us, so.
Andrew, you have a question?
I'm just going to add to the window tinting, from the fire department's point of view, you can't break those windows if they've got tinting on the inside of them.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things we can do with that, is ticket the person, we can issue what's called a defect notice, where if, if you have that tint, I can pull you over, and instead of giving you a ticket, I say, I'm going to give you two weeks to remove it, and report back to me, and as long as you take your window tint off, then you're not going to be charged, and if you don't report back, then not reporting back is actually a wage substantial, it's a higher fine than just the one.
But you know.
Factory hand, right? What we talk about in the factory is all you get, you know. Anybody have anything else?
Is that one question? When this is mandatory alcohol testing come in for every stop that you decide to make? When does that, it doesn't concern me, but I mean, just when did this all come about?
Yeah, that was about 2019.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, yes, wow, it was a long time ago. So when we do check stops, I don't know if anyone's gone through a check stop, typically, you should be blowing on the roadside screen device unless it's, you know, they're stopping a lot, a lot of vehicles, but for the ones we do around here, we're not stopping, you know, 100 vehicles, it might be, you know, 20 or 30 in half an hour, so we're getting everyone to blow on the alcohol screen device. And I can tell you, we find way more impaired drivers, the ones where, you know, you might not pick up on some of the indicators of impairment, but where they're actually blowing on the roadside device, that is catching a lot more people. And of course, those are dealt with outside of the criminal court now, and they're dealt with through the Alberta provincial sanctions, if they're a first-time offender, you may have. So we kick them out of the criminal court system, and we take their vehicle for a month, and suspend their license for three months, and then they have to reapply and do a bunch of things in order to get their license back, and fines, and blow boxes within their vehicle and all that stuff.
What's your, like, the peace officers, the sheriffs, they, they usually go with you when you're doing your check stops, like, do you guys work in conjunction with them?
We have, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have. I wouldn't say we do it every time. They're, of course, on the highway as well, and they're doing the exact same thing that we're doing as far as the.
Yeah, I guess that's what my question was leading to, so they're, they're, they're bound by the same thing, and they, if they have a stop, they would do the same. Are they able to do it without your presence there?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I've heard the rumor back and forth that normally they have to pull in unity.
Nope, under the, under the Traffic Safety Act and all the provincial authorities, their authorities are exactly the same one. In fact, if they, if they do get an impaired driver, where the person is, is, what was a fail, for example, and they've had other impaired, then they take them back to our detachment and call us in, and they'll use our breathalyzer and criminal code file on it.
Yeah, see you, Donna, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple of things, our new community peace officer graduates Thursday.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
Yes, Dan graduates Thursday. Andrew's going to go in my stead because I'm busy, but he will be in Full Force Friday night at the Christmas park at the Truher alongside you.
Oh, cool, yes.
Stella Fuller, girl, three.
Perfect.
And we're excited about that, and then I want to thank you and your team on behalf of administration.
In fact, if they, if they do get an impaired driver where the person is, is, what was it? Fail, for example? And they've had other impaired, then they take them back to our detachment and call us in and they'll use our breathalyzer and criminal code file on it and.
Yeah. See you tomorrow. Go ahead. Thank you. A couple of things. Our new community peace officer graduates Thursday.
Okay. I was wondering about that.
Yep. Dan graduates Thursday. Andrew's gonna go in my stead because I'm busy, but he will be in full force Friday night at the Christmas park at the Tru Girl alongside you.
Oh, cool.
Stella's Fuller Girl three.
Perfect.
And we're excited about that. And then I want to thank you and your team on behalf of administration. We work well together and your team's always there to help us. They're waving at me now, but maybe they figured we went to truck and I gotta get in the truck. And, and, and they're very, very generous with their time. They stop in and say hi. And so we really appreciate it. We appreciate every moment.
I will mention that one other thing is somebody in Hacks policing, we have, we have one in Hacks policing contract funded by Blackpool Schools. And that funds our school resource program. So we have two dedicated members that go into the schools within Blackpool. So Warburg, the Hurricanee, both schools within Thor'sby. And I believe it's about eighty thousand dollars. We get forty thousand and the schools within Le Duke area get forty thousand. And I can tell you, we're on track to use all of those funds. Kids in the school, love our two members. Myself and another member just played a volleyball game with the, against the students with teachers. So we have some impaired driving initiatives that we're gonna go in there in January and do with like beer goggles and riding tricycles around the course. And trying to educate some high school kids on impaired driving. So kudos to Blackpool Division for, for funding that. So.
Do you need some more goggles? I have taken one of the transportation ones, a marijuana goggle.
Yeah, for sure.
I have one in the seat of my truck. I'll throw them down.
That's a little odd, but okay.
Yeah. No, no, they're all yours. When they cleaned out the star rooms, they gave them up to all of us consultants. And of course, I didn't have anybody to ask you if you wanted them.
And she's a passenger drunk.
Yeah.
Why don't you give it to me when I'm your passenger?
Because they're not for public use. Thank you for that. All right. I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you very much for chatting here and.
Way more, way more, he'll be back soon.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving forward, I.
I can just interrupt you for a minute. I think we are way too.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
No, it's our pleasure.
Is this yours?
Well, I have lots of help.
Thank you so much. Two cups of coffee.
Okay. But yeah, you better go.
All right. Mr. Arts, I assume that's you over there.
It's me.
Yeah. So I guess.
I'm not sure anybody.
Yeah, you can see right where you are there.
So I sit here or what?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming in and you've got the floor. Go ahead and.
Yeah, I got a couple of houses here. I've been renting out for a long time. And then I had one little house there on forty seven, fourteen, forty eight A Avenue. It was vacant for about six months. Nothing was used. But I paid every month for the barrel of water. You know, every month you pay ninety seven dollars, no matter what. So I paid for about six months. So I had six barrels of water sitting there. Then I got a new renter in there. Everything is new. Toilet is new. Everything. I don't know what happened. Apparently, here on the toilet. So then in one month, he didn't use one barrel, but he used two, maybe three. But they had sacked six barrels sitting there. I paid for that. So now he charges me, I think it was three hundred fifty dollars. Doesn't make sense. I know the ninety seven or the hundred dollars, I'm willing to pay. But the two fifties, it charges me extra. That's two barrels for two months, I would say. But the six barrels sitting there never got used and I paid for it. So how can they do that? I believe they're just society. What do you think? That's not fair. That's not fair.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, but first of all, we, obviously we have a bylaw on this thing and, and see if Cindy, if you maybe would fill us in here. What do you know about this here? And, and I, I guess like when we have a vacant house, they, under the bylaw, they, they have to continue paying. They can't turn the water off or anything like that, right?
Even if they turn the water off.
They still have to pay them. Okay. So I just.
Nothing was used. Nobody left there.
Okay.
So I gave it down one million every month, six months. And like I said, one month was used to murder somebody. As you say, the man saved the six barrels of water. And he used one barrel to murder. So what we gonna do now? We can rip them off. You know what I mean? You, you understand what I mean?
I, I, I understand.
And I don't know how it was running and why it was running. That whole place, I changed everything. New toilet, everything. So I don't know if it was running or not. I think it was, but like I said, it was lots of reserve. I had lots of reserve. I paid for it.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't, I don't understand the argument. You're saying you had lots of reserve. I don't, what do, what do you mean by reserve? Because you pay, you pay on a month to month to month basis. I, I don't understand what you mean by you had reserve.
Okay. Every month, they charge you for so many cubic meters of water.
Yes.
Ninety seven dollars. If you're older, you pay more.
Yes.
But I never used the six months. I never used that water. So to make it simpler, I had all these barrels of water sitting there and never used. But then that one month apparently here on the toilet and he used a little bit. He used out of the six bottles, uh, six barrels, maybe he used one. But these six barrels were paid already. You know, to make it easier. I don't know if you understand me.
I, I understand. That's just simply not the way the bylaw works though. Like you don't get, you don't get booked the, the under usage forward. That's just not the way the bylaw is written. So I understand what you're saying, but it's simply just not the, the reality of.
Yeah. But then, that's not just society. This is not China, Russia here. We should be a little bit more giving and taking, you know? I'm a giving man. I pay all the time and I'm easy, but this does not make sense.
I think essentially it resets to zero each month. And there's, I think each month it just resets back to zero. You have potential to using that six cubes. If you don't use them, those six get erased and you start at zero for your next month. You're given six cubes to use in your ninety seven, ninety five bill. And then you don't use them, they get pushed away and you reset the next month with zero, or with the new six cubes.
So and then the next month, if I use a little bit too much, if I take one bat too much, that's a charge me.
I like your arrangement, that way of thinking, but that's not the way it works. Cause I know I'm fearful. I've got grandchildren. I live by myself, but when my grandkids are there, if they leave the tap running, I'm always freaking out because, oh, my water's gonna go over.
I, I know, I know. And I would pay. I, I pay. I agree with that. If you swap, water's not cheap anymore.
No.
So use it. But I had six months paying, no use whatsoever, no garbage, no toilet running, no water. So she should give me some compassion, say, man, that guy is paying and paying and paying. He never used anything. Now we use a little bit extra. We're not gonna rip him off. That's what I would do, but I don't know. I know we're living in a complicated world.
Did you get a damage deposit from him? Because it would be, it, did you get a damage deposit from your renter, your tenant? Because it would be him that was at fault for having.
No, 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 you weren't there. You, you misunderstand. The place was empty for six months. No water, nothing. I was renovating. They had nothing used because outside was turned off on three. Then a new renter came in and apparently the first month, here on the toilet already was all new. So then that next month, I got the bill for three hundred fifty dollars because said he used too much water. Six months after it was used. You understand what I mean?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. When you're, when you're thinking in your home that you're away, and there's a lot of residents that do that, they shut it off for the winter. And we do shut it off, what we call the.
And, and then you still pay.
Everybody still pays because there's still an infrastructure cost, right? And you know that to, to pay for that.
I agree with that.
So as, as Counselor Musson said, there's no, there's no buildup. But so then what you're saying, a renter came in and was using more water. Or, or the toilet was running or you didn't fix the toilet or something, right? A toilet that's running will use a lot of water. You never realize that, but if there's a leak in, let's say the.
Well, no, I know that. I know. So the bill was instead of hundred dollars, was three fifty.
That's right.
So there was two months running water there, but for six months I paid for nothing. Absolutely. See? That's what I mean.
There's only four months where there was no usage. If I look at the meter reads, four months. And if that's because, well, and on July, June twenty second, we shut it off for non-payment. And then it was turned back on on August first. But if I look at the meter reads, there was no usage in June, July and August and September. So four months of no usage.
Yeah, four months.
Okay.
And then the renter, their new renter must have moved in in October because.
Yeah. He did move in then. He did move in. He moved until November.
Well, when we.
But he came in, I, he wanted that place really bad because for six hundred dollars, he had nothing more renovated. So he said, I don't want it because I lost traffic. He said, I want that place. So I'm gonna pay for that month. So I got it. So we paid him two places for a month. And then he must have gone in there and turned it and then kept it running. He didn't check. He didn't live there. So yeah, and for two months it was used.
So Mr. Arts, you're, you're not disputing that he used all that water. I mean, that was broken.
No, no, not at all.
So you're disputing is that for six months, you paid and there was no water.
Yeah. She said for four months. I thought it was six.
Oh.
But yeah, so I, I still got two months extra, two more barrels sitting there.
Right.
But I'm not gonna, I don't want money for that.
Well, four, well, I can even tell you.
Yeah, it was four months. No, we didn't.
Four months of use of six cubes a month is twenty four.
Yeah, we don't talk about it, but no.
Well, no, we talk about cubes because you used forty three, forty three cubes. So you still used over what you'd already paid for anyways.
But I guess my question, it's, it's frankly irrelevant. That is not the way the bylaw works. We don't get to pick favorites or choose. The bylaw is fairly clear. It's, it's really, we're, we're not rewriting the bylaw tonight. And even if we did, it won't, would it retroactively apply? I think it's pretty clear.
Do you understand what he's saying, Mr. Arts? So like.
I know. It's all fair.
Well, you know, we, we can't, if the bylaw is there for.
Who wrote the bylaw? You did? You would.
No, I didn't. It hasn't been here for.
Like that because I don't think you would do that.
It's been here for.
The previous, the previous.
Years. It's been here for years, right? Uh, I don't know. The bylaw is probably.
One in twenty fourteen.
Well, that one, but I mean, this one is from twenty twenty.
This one is not paid at the two dollars.
Yes, a minor, minor.
But you.
We're, we're powerless to, to change it tonight or anything like that. I mean, if we, we can take it into consideration for maybe something. But if we do it for one, we've got to do it for all. And, and it's the way the bylaw is written, we have to uphold it.
Yeah, but this never happens. This never happens because I live far out. People here, I'm, I'm, I'm a foreigner, you know, you can see that. So I don't, but people live and she checked the toilet for us. What would happen? Cause she puts the button, say no more leak.
Well.
But I was far away. I can come here. Cost me fifty dollars to come here by gas. I live in San Jose.
But I, you know, I, I, I'm quite sure that whether you live in Thor'sby, you live in Warburg, you live in Le Duke or whatever, their bylaw is exactly the same.
Not really. I got the building. I actually got the brick furniture store in Westlock, the brick rented for me. And now the brick moved out. I told turn the water off. Outside, no showers, no showers whatsoever. No water use, no showers. Turn it off in the road.
But the fact is we did want the water on half the time used to occur. So it would be irrelevant, even if we had a no charge for when the water is turned off situation. If that was the case, the fact is by the time the, the leak occurred, you did in fact want the water back on again and we'd still be in the exact same spot.
If your water.
I think what, I think we missed.
He's complicating me because he knows I'm supposed to be out here.
So with Counselor Gilbert.
The one case is very simple. Everybody understands.
With Counselor Gilbert is saying, okay, that's, it's unfortunate you didn't have a tenant for those months. But if you, if you had it the next month, it would have cost you more money to turn the water on and everything than it would have done off. So I mean, you have to have it on the map. So, you know, it's, it's unfortunate you didn't have a tenant for all those months. But if you, if you had one, all of a sudden, after the first month, your water's there. And that's why this whole thing is written this way, because we can't interrupt, you know, turning it on and off.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's not because it was only turned off for one month, he said, because a lady did the page. But I mean, but no, no, but nothing was used. Don't matter if it was turned on in the road or not turned off. Nothing was used. The meter never counted. Nothing, 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 nothing was used.
Yeah, go ahead.
Typically, when you have a tenant in, does the water bill not go to the tenant?
No.
Your water bill has to go to that owner because.
Goes to me.
Yeah, I, I didn't question.
Because the tenant doesn't pay.
Then we're stuck.
My property.
Then we're stuck.
So I can't.
So if.
It's different. It definitely is different.
Well, most, most towns, like I live in Stony Plains and I rent and my water bill comes in my landlord's name. I pay it. But it comes in her name. It's not in my name.
I got Parkland Villas. I got a couple, almost actually eight of them. And there, the water goes to me. And then I.
Yeah. So you not let this tenant, you not give this, this tenant your water bill here?
Oh, yes, I do.
Oh.
No, but you know what I did? I used to do that before, but now like this I ended up paying six hundred. But I told them, you pay seven hundred. Why? Because every month the water bill is a buck. No, no. But I said, it's higher. I show it to you.
Yeah.
You know, I'm getting smarter too. I want to hear it because otherwise you're broke.
So I think the, the water bill would be your tenant's bill, isn't it?
Yeah.
The over usage.
Yeah, that's why I let them pay instead of six hundred.
Yes, yes.
I let them pay seven hundred.
But if in this particular month it was, I'll say nine hundred, wouldn't you charge him nine hundred for the water bill? To include the extra billing?
Like most people will just, like, we have lots of people who rented Thor'sby and they pay their own water bill. They come in and they, they pay their water bill themselves.
The tenant.
I can do it that way.
Yeah. And then this wouldn't even be an issue because he'd have to pay for the three hundred and twenty four dollars and ninety two cents that he used because he let the toilet run.
Yeah, but you know what?
I was gonna say, it sounds like in fact, if a toilet was a faulty toilet, that probably was needed to be remedied either way. It doesn't sound like.
But he didn't, wasn't a new toilet.
It was a new toilet. It was all.
So it was poorly installed or not.
But you know, I'm a good man. The guy's on age. He's very, very handicapped. So I don't want to charge him. I don't want to do that. I'm not a tater. I'm a giver. But I want fairness when I'm just saying, that's all, you know? Two hundred fifty dollars not gonna kill me. I went fourteen hours. I got the brick store. I got the daycare building in Le Duke. I go out there. But I believe in a just society. That's the thing.
Well, Mr. Arts, I, I really appreciate you coming in and, and we are sympathetic to you for sure, but we have to hold.
They told me already. You're not gonna scum. And I told her, I said, we watch, watch out. I'm Dutch and if you're not Dutch, you're not.
No, no.
She said, I'm Dutch too.
We're invited to come in here and talk to us, but you know, we have to uphold, uphold.
Well, no, I know that. It's not. It's just, uh, in one way it doesn't make sense, you know? It's not really fair, you know that? Cause I save water for them, you know, like, and then after I get a little bit and then nobody's just take us. We're not givers. Yeah, it was. I haven't discovered, man. You guys don't give nothing. Same with Christmas. I can buy lots of bread, but I don't get nothing. Next year, I'm not gonna buy nothing either.
I, I, you know, I, I would urge you to get after your tenants and, and that's all I can tell you. I mean, you know, I, I, I'm not.
Ask them to be vigilant and.
Yeah. It's unfortunate, but in, in our, in our position, we have to do it this way. Cause otherwise we'd be sitting in your chair right there and saying, well, how come we can't collect this money? You know, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's the, that's the way the system works and that's the way our bylaw works. And I think I speak for the whole council and say that, you know, unfortunate, but we can't do anything about it.
I, all I said was, other people have tried and have been unsuccessful.
So yeah, the men, you know, you can't spend a little. You're gonna be wasting your time.
All right. Is there anything else we can do for you, sir?
Nothing else. I hope it's not gonna happen again.
Sadly, there's no bank account. Sadly, there's no bank account of water.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, thank you very much for your time. And, uh, and like I said, uh, I'm gonna have some coffee with somebody.
Oh, I need some.
Yes. You haven't had coffee with me yet.
Are you, you're the mayor?
No, he's.
No.
Absolutely. I'm the chief minister of. Chief of the boss.
Oh, you're the dumb man. There used to be the museum. They do from museum.
From England, that Christine.
Yeah, yeah.
She won the lottery.
Did she?
And said goodbye.
And it's stupid.
Five million.
Five million.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, she won a million dollars five times, I think it was.
No, two and a half. Two and a half, two and a half.
Yeah, I think she won multiple times. Just she split it with herself is all it is.
It was it was a sheer fluke too, because, well, I guess she would have won the five million either way, but her husband forgot.
Yeah, I'd already bought things like the same numbers and. Yes, I I've never heard.
Bought the same numbers twice in the same week.
Yeah, I've I've never heard of him splitting the lottery with himself or her.
It happened in Thorsby.
So you won and she won?
Yes.
Well, he won and he won, and he has to share it with her.
So they went back to England?
No, she's at home.
It's not too long, you know?
Not in Thorsby.
Period. That kind of money is Thorsby sounds good to me.
It's always good.
Mostly they're happy.
All right. Thank you very much. I see. Do we need any motion for any of these here or not?
Um.
I'm gonna motion to deny.
I'm just thinking it through. Uh, I would like to see a motion that says that counsel, uh, turned the delegation and voted to.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll read the scene. Okay. And voted to deny the delegation's request.
Yeah, I've moved to accept the delegation's, uh, presentation for information and direct administration to maintain the current standard set in the existing bylaw.
Thank you for that. On favor?
Each one, I hope.
All right. Okay, uh, old business, the seven point one seventy-fifth anniversary. So, um, let's get the worst, we've got to blast through the bylaw here and get to what I need. Okay? I'm not moving that thing. Okay, so, um, basically at, um, community input sheets, uh, to determine from the, uh, and I'm going to, I'm gonna ask our legislative clerk to speak to this, um, by the way, introduce this. Community surveys were were developed and sent out with two questions. When would you like to see the anniversary celebration? With your worship's permission, I'd like to invite Legislative Clerk Carlton to, uh, produce the report.
Um, thank you very much for that. Um, so what I did was I made little community input cards that were very simple. Um, just said whether people are interested in seeing the, I should have grabbed one, interested in seeing the seventy-fifth anniversary event come with our May Long Weekend event, or whether they would like to see a date in September. And I left that one open with a line so that if people were interested in coming in later in the weekend or a certain other weekend on the calendar, they could leave their input. Um, I left thirty-three cards each, uh, which I found so far to be the perfect amount. Nobody's using, um, too much more than that. I am proud to go refill. Uh, I left them at major, I would say, footpoint areas of town, like people seem to go frequently. Um, the Culver Esso, the Youth and the Restaurant, Dick's Insurance, the pharmacy, uh, the Bottle Depot, I found, gets a lot of foot traffic, uh, Art Rec Center, and then here's the Town Office. Um, I still, I've had them out for pretty much all month now. I think I took them out, um, I would say the first Monday of this month. Um, and most of our input cards actually came from the rec center, um, which wasn't a surprise. We get plenty of people from Thorsby in there. Um, and then we had twenty-five cards returned, um, which we were always hoping for more, but, uh, you know, it is what it is. If people don't want to, they don't have to. And, um, you know, they might not see them. And so this isn't the last survey or community input that we want to do for, uh, the seventy-fifth anniversary. We want to keep going, but these were very simple. I chose not to collect anybody's name or personal information because I find that that makes people less inclined to fill out cards when they have to give the town their name and. And it's not really about going through and verifying that every person lives here because, um, I, even people from the Duke County, I find everybody's input to be very valuable. Uh, and, you know, our festivities aren't just for Thorsby. So I chose not to collect anybody's personal information. Um, the survey was not available online because we have an issue, and I'm trying to kind of work around for surveys, and I think I do. Um, we have an issue with the town, and we just saw it recently, a website where in particular, we are receiving a lot of spam form inputs and reported problem inputs from, uh, Indian companies. Um, quite a bit, actually, uh, to the point where we have had to quit major stops on all of our, uh, form inputs, try to do more captions, um, working with our website provider. They have now gotten through the reported problem, and they figured out how to spam that, uh, even though it takes many more steps. So what I did not want to do was have an insulated survey made with spam reports. Um, and because that would completely skew everything that we got back. So for the smaller survey, it's reduced to the the forms that you can fill out in person at any of these locations. For a larger survey, that includes, again, a larger conversation about what people would like to see at the seventy-fifth anniversary, um, when, I'm gonna leave when they would like it on. I'm not gonna take that question out just because we've done this survey. Um, and we'll include more questions, um, in conjunction with community groups. Uh, hopefully, well, hopefully, that will be available online. I want that to be up here shortly. Um, now on to the bill. So far, we've had three for September, um, one of them naming Labor Day Long Weekend, the other two not naming anything specific. And then twenty-two people in favor for having the festivities along with May Long Weekend. And that's just what we've seen so far. It's just a preliminary. We're still early in the year. We're not.
Well, I think we we dealt with this, you know, adequately in our our budget thing, right? Like, we we said what we were gonna do. We were just kind of looking for the date. So we're really, um, I think that's all all we're looking for at this time, right? Go ahead.
Could this information make it into the Connect thirty-nine?
Does it go?
No, just this general information, kind of what we're reading here, where it's available, what we're asking of people.
No, I didn't.
I think that would be it.
Yeah, I.
Because I did look for it on the website, and I didn't see it because the county.
I planned for the larger survey, yeah.
So.
I'll put it in tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Anybody got any other discussion on that? Can I get a more, accept that as information?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. On favor? And that is carried. All right, uh, eight point one, December twenty-second, half-day office closure. Hey, worship, uh, we're requesting that, uh, council provide permission, uh, uh, to the C O administration to close the office for half of the workday on December twenty-second, which is a Friday, starting at noon for our staff function for Christmas. Okay. Anybody have any discussion on? No? Okay, can I get a motion to, uh, have December twenty-second office closed at noon?
Yeah, I can make that motion.
Okay, great. On favor? That is carried.
Thank you very much, uh, counsel. It, uh, I appreciate it. We're swimming in the snow.
Is there anything?
Basically, that's kind of Christmas Eve, isn't it? Because, yeah.
Twenty-second. No, it's closed.
Well, I know, I know it is, but I'm just saying there's no more, no more workday.
No more workdays, no.
Okay.
Well, for the staff.
Perfect. So then, um, moving on, eight point two and eight point three. I think we can probably deal with these both because they're both surveys, right? So.
We can, your worship. And basically, to summarize it, uh, the provincial government has given us two choices. Uh, one, where each councillor, they've had a C O survey and council surveys, and and C O has filled it out already. Ours were individual. Uh, asking similar questions, what the government is asking of one or two ways of doing this, either each councillor fills it out individually or the council sends the C O the responses, and we mail the responses, uh, on town letterhead, signed by the mayor and the C O, to the minister. And they're recommending the minister anyway because it has more impact. But, uh, that's that's the two options that, uh, have been provided. So we'll, we'll certainly, uh, hear your discussion and see, see what you'd like to do.
Yeah, what does everybody wish to do? Like, I mean, I wouldn't take, a pretty short question. I think if everybody just filled theirs out and gave it back to you, that would be efficient.
Yeah.
You agree with you with that?
Fine.
We can do that.
That way, that way you get everybody's opinion and, uh, okay, so and and there's a deadline. It has to be in by December sixth.
That is correct.
So maybe if we could put a.
By the end of the week, we'll have ours.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, then I, we can synthesize them next week, get them into the, get them into municipal. I, I mean, I didn't want to, uh, pick one way or another, but the Minister, uh, Municipal Affairs, Mr. Uh, Mr. MacIver, Mr. MacIver, I know him from working in transportation. He likes letters. They're very impactful to him.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, having little third, we come along with, you know, the council saying this and this and this. Um, we'll do that. And then once it's synthesized, uh, we'll send a letter to you so you know what's going out, and then we'll finally get it off the, and we'll courier it to.
Okay, so I guess the motion to, uh, have these, uh, questionnaires completed by everybody individual and back to administration by Friday, I guess, is what we're kind of looking for. Okay, so do you want to make that motion?
I can make that motion.
Do you want to, okay, right? Carried.
Tell John and Shelby.
Yeah.
By this Friday, is that what you said?
That is correct. It's gonna take us a little while to.
Yeah.
To, uh, throw it all in. It's it's an interesting, interesting survey, uh, one on the M G, of course, and one on on the other, and, uh, it's interesting.
There was a few contentious things in both, yeah.
Well, yeah. I I'm looking forward to seeing all the C O's responses, actually.
I can imagine. There's, like I say, a few things that really made me stop and reread.
Uh, yes.
Make sure I was understanding properly because I wasn't sure I was at first. It seemed odd, a few of them.
It took me a little while to do it, actually, on my part. That took a while to think it through a little bit.
Okay, and moving on to the bylaws and policies. Nine point one, a bylaw twenty twenty-three eleven to repeal bylaw twenty twenty-two thirteen, meeting procedures. See, the one I feel.
But, your worship, uh, this, this, of course, repeals, um, bylaw twenty-two thirteen only because, uh, on the next R F D, we we made some changes. Uh, probably, I think, two or three weeks ago, we had, we brought it to, uh, Cal. And there's been no, no comment from council, which is fine. And so we're suggesting tonight that, uh, this bylaw repeat, be repealed. So this is the first part of it, is to repeal that bylaw. And then the next R F D is to, uh, read you the changes, and then, uh, we can move forward with, uh, the new proposed bylaw. There's not many changes. But we'll deal with this, uh, item first if, if we can, um, have council, uh, run the, run the readings to repeal twenty-two, twenty twenty-two thirteen. Thank you, Cory.
Well, I guess technically, though, should we not be passing twenty twenty-three ten first because it's the bylaw that governs the conduct of meetings? So if we repeal the one first, there's no actual rules for how we would go about implementing the second one.
Um, we're repealing, uh.
Immediate procedure bylaw.
Yeah, that's right.
And then there's no immediate procedure bylaw in place to govern the conduct of approving a new bylaw.
You know what? You're right. Hang on.
We can, we can go through twenty twenty-three ten.
You're nine point two instead.
Yeah, we just, we just, yeah, we just move in with other order than than, yeah.
That's a very good point.
That's okay.
Technically, the meeting would just, like, cease to exist essentially. It would be a weird quandary, technically.
Maybe we'd have a holiday, but you're right. We just, we just, it's, so let's, uh.
Page ninety-nine. We can do the, does anybody have anything want to bring up there, or we're okay to pass it here in the, in the discussion?
If we can have a point of order that we're repealing, uh, twenty twenty-two thirteen. I'll just, hold it.
Twenty twenty-three ten.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three ten.
That's the one we're passing.
You're passing. You're not repealing.
Yeah, we're passing twenty twenty-three ten. So have we already done a reading or not? I can't remember that one.
No, no, it's not.
Okay, so can I have a, uh?
There was, there was, there wasn't any major substantive changes. It was going to be just formatting.
It it was grammatic. It it, I can run through that really quickly. Uh, it was basically, uh, it's basically, we're changing Thorsby Target to Connect thirty-nine. Uh, remove a section due to no such stipulation for regular meetings. It allows council to make decisions about meeting dates at at the organizational meeting without having to amend the bylaw every time. Uh, Part eleven seventy, change the committee of the whole to a regular meeting. That was a clerical error from the old bylaw. Part seventeen nine, we're adding in in offer recordings to the exceptions and change one week to seven business days to account properly for holidays and weekends. Part nineteen six, remove for redundancy. We do not have a guest book. Uh, twenty point four, uh, remove for redundancy. Again, we don't have a guest book. That's to do with, uh, um, public hearing. We have a, we have a sign-in sheet basically for public hearings. For thirty-four one, we added language from the M G A. Adjutant additions are recommended to the only matters of utmost importance according to the Act. Part thirty-four two, we added a correspondence section. Thirty-four three, we changed to four. So we changed regular meeting to regular committee of the whole meeting. We added available at the time to account for when information is still incoming before the agenda is finished, and we changed six P M. to midnight to provide more needed time. Add add in part thirty-four three, committee of the whole order a business section to match the regular. So they're, they're very, they're very minor changes, administrative changes.
Okay, so I would move first reading of bylaw twenty twenty-three ten, meeting procedures.
Thank you, Cory. On favor? Carry. Can I get a motion for the second reading?
I can make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy. On favor? Carried. And can we, you want to do it all tonight and get it done? There's no reason not to, I don't think. So you need another motion, just, uh, we can do the third reading.
By you now, it's considered, sir, and then the third read.
Yes. Any motions that affect?
I'm not gonna oppose it if somebody wants to make that motion, but in principle, I am definitely not making that motion. I do not like doing three readings in one meeting.
Okay, well, we can bring it back. That's fine, too.
I can make the motion.
Okay, thank you. On favor? That is carried. And a third and final motion to approve bylaw twenty twenty-three ten.
Please.
Tracy, on favor? Thank you.
Say, I'm just opposed in principle to three readings in one reading is all, so.
I agree, no.
I don't need to make the motion if you want, it's not.
We try not to.
He won't oppose you. He just won't make the motion.
We try very hard enough to do that because you're always ringing in our ear.
We're like, Cory, don't go away.
Well, it's it's not ideal.
No, it's not ideal.
The point of three readings is that you have time to reflect and consider and get feedback. There's no time for any of that if we're doing it all at once.
I agree. All right, okay, well, so we'll go back to nine point one. And, uh, that is on seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
Okay, so.
Repeal.
I would move first reading of bylaw twenty twenty-three eleven, repeal of bylaw twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, meeting procedures.
Thank you very much. On favor? That is carried. Can I get a?
Second reading of bylaw twenty twenty-three eleven, repeal bylaw twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two thirteen, meeting procedures.
Thank you. On favor? That is carried.
No, you are, sorry, you have to, sorry, you have to do another, another reading, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Still gotta do another reading, though, so.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Whether it's tonight or another night.
Correct, okay.
Well, you have to do that because otherwise you have two meeting procedures.
Okay.
Can I get a motion, too, so we can do the third reading?
I can do that motion.
All favor, that's carried. All right, there we go. Now.
So now you need another.
Now I need a motion for the third and final reading.
I'm.
See, on favor? Now it's carried.
There.
We're good.
I got it now. I'll get with this program. All right.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you for your input. Thank you for pointing out, uh, two enlightening things. It's all good.
Obviously, I want to be, uh, stuck in nomadland.
Okay, nine point three. The elective officials' remuneration policy.
Uh, your worship, uh, this, this is, uh, we just, we discussed this, but again, it's a policy, so, you know, need three readings on it. But, um, the, uh, you have the twenty-fourteen, December ninth. But, um, the, uh, you have the, uh, twenty-fourteen, December ninth, uh, remuneration policy. And, uh, and it replaced twenty-twelve sixty-eight. Then administration wrote the new one under gut twenty-three oh-two. This is our new policy format and we were bringing up a little different so that they have sections. So what I'm going to do is, uh, with your permission, your worship, it's turned over to CFO Cindy for to, uh, talk about this policy.
Okay, and I already have some changes. Okay. Um, under the definition of a meeting, I want to remove the claim for any day shall not be more or less than a hundred and seventy-five dollars as being a daily meeting honorarium just because we talked about honorarium at the bottom. So I want to remove that one. And then, under the meeting, where it says daily meeting honorarium, I just want to change it to meeting honorarium and then go a hundred to a hundred and seventy-five. And then put, um, for meetings up to three hours, three-hour attendance and participating, participation activities from area and each councillor, the rate will be one hundred dollars. And then for over three hours in attendance would be one seventy-five. Take out the effective March first, two thousand twelve, a hundred dollars. Take out that line altogether. And so all that would be in there is the two meeting honorarium rate. And then move, should the mayor take that line, up to under the council, because I have to deal with if the mayor takes the leave of absence and there's a new deputy mayor. Or the deputy mayor takes the mayor's seat, that they would get the mayor's honorarium for the time. So it's just basically moving some stuff around.
Yeah, well, nothing's changed. This is, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, it came up, that's, uh, a different committee meeting, uh, a while back, but I would apply here as well. Uh, and there was kind of a weird point of ambiguity there as well. What happens, for example, say there's, kind of, uh, AUMA in Calgary and a couple people go and they spend the day traveling. Does that count yes or no as an honorarium day or not?
Oh, like, okay, if it's travel to Calgary.
Yeah, just what, what they pay for travel.
Travel time you're talking.
Like, obviously, if someone drives to the Duke, it's not really an issue. But like I say, if there's like, I don't know, we're going to F C M. in Toronto for some reason for the first time in forever. Like, if, if it ever were to come up, I don't know that we have an answer either.
I don't think we do.
Just that was Duke didn't either, so I figured I'd point it out.
And what do you think?
Well, I, uh, you're getting paid your mileage and I don't, I don't think, I don't, you're talking about a three-hour drive to Calgary and you're saying that should be part of.
I'm saying I have no idea if it is or isn't. It's a point of ambiguity, but I was just pointing out, I don't actually.
I, I don't think.
So it doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
It'd be no different than going to Edmonton for one hour and we don't charge for that. So why would we charge?
Yeah, I think you get paid your travel. If you're flying, we pay for your flight, right?
Right, yeah, it should be clarified, I guess.
Yeah, we can, we can add that in there.
You're looking at seat time, yeah. Usually if, if a business or municipality is paying for your expenses, you don't get to charge travel time in an honorarium, usually.
Fair enough. I'd say it seemed like a point of ambiguity there and it seemed equally ambiguous here, so.
I think we need to clarify, you're right.
We can put that under the meeting.
Yeah.
The meeting honorarium.
We can, yeah, just clarify that you're right because otherwise you think, okay, well, I've been in aircraft five hours, I'm going to charge for five hours.
Well, exactly. Like, I don't think most people would, but I don't know if you are supposed to or not. Like, I don't, like, why should we sign off on Daryl's time sheet and he did though? And I have no idea if that's okay or not.
That's right. So like. I agree. No, I, it would be, it would be our, our theory that, uh, if your expenses are being paid, your travel time is null and void because your expenses are being.
Travel time.
Do you want to, do you want to make those changes and bring it back? Or do you want to put what the changes?
We can make.
We can make the changes, bring them back, for sure.
And we'll bring it back, do we bring it back to Cow? And then we can look at it again and discuss it. And then we can have it as a regular, a discussion.
Yeah, we could do that.
Nothing, nothing that changes.
Everything you're saying, we're, we're, that's the way we're administering anyhow.
Basically, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, it's just the format. And then we, I mean, with, what we did change was the cost of living adjustment, right? Because we talked about that at budget that, or.
Yeah, we've never, we haven't had it since.
Yeah, and so we just put, when approving and discussing the budget, council may by unanimous vote increase honorarium to no more than the increase for employees in the collective agreement.
Okay, I get a motion to, um, bring that back to the next, uh, council meeting.
Uh, yeah, I'd move to, uh, refer that to the next committee of the whole.
Yeah.
All in favor? That is carried.
Okay. Great feedback, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, okay, eleven point one, variance report. C O Cindy, if you would, please.
Yeah. Let me make a picture. I was tired. Um, so right now, we're sitting at revenue of a hundred and, hundred and one percent. That's mostly, I think, come to grants that weren't in the original budget. I've got weeks received for the water for, water for life grants and then a health grant. And then, um, expenses were at seventy-eight percent of our, our budget. So right now, we're sitting at a variance of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. But there's still three months of the year left, so.
Got the requisition today for those of the county foundation.
Oh, that's not that bad. Twenty-four hundred bucks.
Yes, it went up for the first time and.
It went up last year a little bit?
Last year, yeah, we did last year as well, you're right, yeah.
But I mean, that's non-issue to us because we collectively did.
The school's on its way.
Yes, that's a non-issue.
That one would be a bigger, bigger bill, I must.
A bigger bill.
So Cindy, if you're mayor, you're accounting for three more months of the year, too?
Well, there's three more months. So I'm saying like we're at seventy-eight percent of our, we're three quarters of the way through the year.
Printing?
As of, as of October thirty-first, so this variance report goes October. There's only, there's only two more months.
Just trying to figure out.
Too expensive months, yes, they are too expensive months.
Potentially expensive, yeah.
Because there's more, uh, no, not like that way, but expensive because there's a lot coming out. Like, uh, well, requisition comes out again, defense rating has come out again. So yes, it looks like we have.
Yes, also potentially Andrew's way.
Shh, 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 no more water main break.
We're not talking about that.
See, it's when you assume we're doing okay and that it won't be, that's.
I never assume we're doing okay.
That's when it will be okay.
Yes, I never assume we're doing okay.
I have to be pessimist and assume it's going to be, uh, yeah.
Kind of how we're looking at it.
That's why I'm liking, even though it looks good, so let, let's not get excited yet.
I thought maybe it's the baker's dozen or something.
No, no, I'm actually glad we only have two months left, or an hour down to one month. Yeah, really.
Yeah.
Anybody have any?
Question?
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the variance report for information?
I'll make that motion.
Favor? Carrie. All right, so we're, just before we go on camera, any public, uh, you are the public.
I guess, just with the budget, you guys, I, I didn't get to read it all on line or anything here from the meetings chat. Um, how's that supposed to affect taxes in the upcoming year?
Well, we were, we were just over three percent, but we still have some.
Adjustments.
Adjustments to do to it, so, um, but I know council doesn't really want it more than three, so we gotta.
I don't want it any more than zero.
But see, here's, so here's the.
Right now?
Oh, you know what? I totally get it, but this is the issue we have. Just our increase in salaries per the collective agreement warrants at least a two percent increase. Like, so, uh, unless we cut services all the time, if we, we have to keep cutting services then to get, get a zero.
You want to say, what, everything's at, what, a seven and dollar?
Six point six.
You have, what, like a five in the Duke?
Oh, I know where they're, I know where they're going. That's why I asked, where everybody wants to increase it. And I imagine with the money that's owed still, there's a increase in the interest rates and all the other good stuff.
Well, no, our interest rates are, are static.
If anything, interest rates going up is actually beneficial.
It's been beneficial.
Because we, we are the net recipient of, of higher interest rates.
Yeah.
When we have our budget, our money comes in, in big lump sums, our grants and such. We have to have large amounts of money sitting in the bank account. Higher interest rates are actually doing quite well.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a positive for us.
Considering the Duke wanted all the region to be at five, they have to, they have to.
I know the counties, uh, what, two, two and a bit, three, I think they're under three, so.
Under three, just barely.
Yeah.
With everything else that's going up, up, up.
Oh, I know.
It's going somewhere.
We try to hold the line. Yeah, we're holding the line pretty good. Um.
If you don't have snow removal this year, maybe you can cut it off.
Yeah, but who knows what it's going to do next year, that's the thing.
We don't know. We don't know, but the money in the bank thing, well, that's a next year's problem, but it's just my opinion, but I'm sure there's a lot of other ones with the same opinion here. But like you said, there's a lot of renters here that don't give a shit either.
But I, and I, I totally get it. And it's just, it's really hard when a one percent tax increase only brings in fifteen thousand dollars. So when you have salaries going up more than that, like based, like our overall salary increase.
Oh, I know. When they're thinking that three percent even of four thousand some dollars for taxes that we're paying now, I.
Yeah, no, I, like, I, I totally.
Every year it's.
I totally understand it. I, I mean, it's tough because, because then where do, where do we cut? Because we cut and then nobody's happy either because service levels go down and then.
Yeah.
So it's.
Well, we're, we're, we do the best we can to get as low as we can.
Yeah.
I've been to a few meetings, I know you guys are just trying.
We're trying.
It's a concern that they keep going up and the services are still going up.
I mean, it's crazy.
The services are static though, where we are right now, what we get for services.
Yeah, because we're trying, unfortunately, we're trying to, we're trying to make, or reestablish the, the assets that we have that are falling apart.
Yeah.
And I mean, not roads or anything, because roads are, I mean, we talked last budget, at, even that budget, the one road that in town that needs to be repaired is, is what did you guys think? Four, it's going to be four million dollars during the whole thing?
For three, for sure, three.
Yeah, three.
That's only one of multiple problems.
That's the worst roads.
That's, yeah.
Yeah. That's why it's important we find income.
Well, I know, a lot of infrastructure things does have to be caught up on after, supposedly after the debt is gone, but, uh.
Yeah.